Good evening, I will call the board our strategic plan for Tuesday, November first, two thousand twenty-two, let the record show that all of them are present, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous committee meeting held Tuesday, October eighteenth. Could I get a second? Second, my old man Gonzalez, all in favor, I opposed, motion carried. Uh, we got unfinished business here, we got PL one oh five dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio, to authorize the mayor to execute a change order agreement with Clark Patterson Lee, for engineering and design services for South Union Street, Street Gate project. Mr. Mayor? Director Thompson?
Good evening. So this mean next year Halloween's gonna fall and a council meeting, we all have to dress up?
Oh, I've been waiting for that.
I'll start planning for it already.
Yes.
So, we're talking here about the change order for South Union Street. The original plan left out several elements that we took a look at and went back to them and came up with a proposal to modify the scope work so we get this completed and get it done by twenty twenty-four. And there was a lot of design services that weren't accounted for, so we have quote here, we looked at two things. And it's really, I spoke with the mayor, the one option we're not too excited about because of the cost, that was for the construction services, we're gonna have to go back and take a look, I, construction inspection, oversight of the project.
Ah.
Because without good oversight, you don't get a good project, but that came in way too high, so we had to split it up. And we're looking to finish the design services. They were looking for a hundred forty-eight seven, and then there were some elements left out, so we went back to them, they came in at one ninety-five, three hundred. The construction services is almost another half a million, so we've gotta come up with, we got down, all we're looking at other options for that. And we'll come back to what we think we need to do there, but to get this thing off the ground, get it finished, get it moving, and meet the deadline of completion by June of twenty twenty-four, we need to finish this design.
I guess I need a summary of the, the DRI, this was a DRI project, right? I don't even really have a good, like, uh, I guess I need a refresher on, like, what were the, the, the big hitters there, the, the molders?
Okay, so, for the, all remaining DRI, or just this particular one?
Let's start with this one, as I do wanna know about the other ones too, but yeah.
So what we have is this is taking it from the circle down here in front of the building, all the way down to the bridge and South Union.
Yep.
It is going to basically, uh, continue what we did on North Union, it'll be another, I think, a traversable roundabout in there. Uh, we're looking to do the same, in essence, same thing, we're not putting in, at this point, there's no fire concern of that nature, but it is the street renovation. There'll be some tree work, some tree removal, there'll be some bus stops in there.
Share this map, if you can.
Yes.
That's on the bridge move on side of the street with the, uh, the ten-foot mold used back?
And we're doing that same thing going up East State Street also.
Awesome. So just, can you, Robert, can you run those numbers past me again?
Sure.
The original, what were the original numbers?
So what they were looking for, they wanted another hundred and forty-eight, seven hundred from us, and they left out a lot of the key elements, so we went back and talked to them, it's one ninety-five, three hundred is what they want.
Okay.
Construction services was never part of the plan, we have to maybe to try and get a number there, and that's what came in at four eighty-eight.
So, follow up on that real quick, then, construction services, uh, big dollar item for them, is that something that with one of our consultants that we use that we could keep in-house, or is that outside the scope of one of the part timers that we currently use all the way out?
In fact, you can see from what Clark Patterson gave us, they're allocating two full-time people, a senior and junior engineer. And that's our entire staff that we're running the CHIPS program with, all the other projects, the sidewalk program, all the inspections, for everything, they're saying that's the minimum they need for the job.
I know, but I, I, I was just thinking of like, you know, the part-time, I guess, consultant that we use, uh, the retired Alderman Ring, uh, but yeah, this is a two, a two-time, two-person, we got.
What I'd like to do, when I spoke briefly to Carrie on, I gotta get with her on the ins and outs of the DRI project, if we could get construction services to cover the remaining projects all in one for less than a month.
Oh.
Because we've got East and West State Street, and then South Union, so if we could come up, find a way to package this, be a little bit more than it would be for each one, but it would be cheaper overall, is what I'm thinking.
Okay, good idea.
Construction services, are they like a fed, like a?
No.
What are they?
Construction services, what we're talking about here is the inspection, the, uh, oversight of the project, project management.
Oh.
You know, if you're not there every day, you're not gonna get as good a product, that's just a fact. So, we lose money in the end by not having full-time oversight.
So the original project goal was what, and what is it gonna be now?
Uh...
Well, Mark.
Do we need to have the actual?
I don't have a, I don't have a real number for you.
Do we need, I mean, are we putting the cart before the horse, I would assume we need to have the one ninety-five design service
Absolutely.
to be able to have an idea what the, the cost is.
Absolutely, so I don't have that full cost.
Uh, Alderman, I'm gonna call.
Okay, so you said that the one ninety-five three is for, um, tree removal, trees, bus stop, and to add?
No, it's completing the design, those are some things that are changed in it, but it's completing the final design, it's the bidding package, it's the design drawings, it's the...
I think I should shed some light on this, uh, the prior DW, yeah, DPW director was going to work with, uh, who do we have on this one, Clark Patterson Lee?
And Alder?
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, he was working with both of them to, uh, to do some of the design work. Uh, we don't have that capability anymore, so we're gonna have to contract the design work out.
Alderman, wait.
Thank you, um, I don't know if you have the figures in front of you, but what was the total co, the total price from the DRI money? For this project, sorry, overall, the money that we received?
That we received, oh, uh, I don't have a pro.
Yeah, if you remember, this, the original, this was only supposed to go to, uh, it started out going to Henley Street, then we extended it to, uh, Green Street. And then, uh, I think it was, uh, Alderman Gonzalez said it would be nice if we could take this all the way to the bridge. And so that's, that's where we're, uh, that's where the design work needs to be now. Uh, I, I guess I can see that we're, we're really not prepared with all the figures and stuff, so I would say let us, uh, put this off until next, maybe next Tuesday night, and we can come in with all of the, uh, all of the figures and add to, uh, to, uh, refresh everybody on the total cost and what's going on with all of this.
And maybe if we could have a handout next, when we do bring it up again, like, just some kinda, something on paper.
Yeah, so I mean, at one time, at one point in time, he had an estimate, even, I think Bob Rain kinda gave us an estimate, but that was pre-COVID, of what the project would cost to go to the, the bridge, and costs and things now, I'm sure, are much different, and so, at least, I mean, it helps me understand what this PL is tied to, is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for us to approve, so Clark Patterson Lee can do all the design work on this project, upon having the design work and the bid scope, then we can get an idea of the pricing of, of what that total project is.
We could give you a rough, possibly rough, because like you said, everything has changed.
Right.
We, I could definitely give you how much the DRI project is allotted for, I can give you that.
So the one ninety-five comes out of the DRI money of past the city? Okay, so what I'm hearing is the DRI money only goes to Henley, so anything past there is gonna be the city?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's true, right, because there was a discussion.
Just so we're all on the same page?
Yeah, no, there was discussion in years past, I remember, uh, Paul kinda leading that charge, that, you know, if we're gonna do this project, we're gonna invest in our downtown, we're gonna do it.
And, and that's fine, I just wanna make sure we all feel.
There would be a city commitment to this.
So the only thing I question that is, I, I, I wonder if it, if it originally went to Green, and then we extended it to the bridge, I could be wrong though, I don't know why, I don't, I don't feel like we would just stop at Henley, that was, that was ever in the number, discussed, but, like, like I said, I don't know.
I know, I thought originally there had been talk about the roundabout at Henley,
Yeah.
and then that got removed because of the, uh, the slope of the, the street there, and that roundabout got moved down to Green Street, but, but maybe if we can get a rundown bill of what, what the DRI actually funds, how much we got?
We could do that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good refresher for all of us.
This has changed many times.
Yeah.
One point, for some reason, one point five million is sticking to the project, but then we, uh, but then, yeah. We've already, I can't, I don't know how much we've already paid, uh, CPL, uh, for their work, but thi- this is an additional one ninety-five they want to draw.
Alderman?
I just have one more question, CPL, are those the people that were from North Carolina?
None.
Are they still in that?
No.
Okay.
Alder, I think, did like the preliminary concept, mockup, and so Clark Patterson Lee is the engineering firm, I don't know if they're based out of Buffalo?
There's one in, there's one in. They have an office out, based out of Rochester, Buffalo.
Um, well, that does lead me to some of the other questions, so I mean, uh, Director Thompson, so we, we've got a turnaround here of twenty twenty-four, where did all the other projects come in, I mean, at what, are, are, is there gonna be construction on East State Street, West State Street, and South Union Street, all at the same time, or what's gonna, how are we gonna get these in?
Well, that is gonna be the tricky part, we are looking, I spoke with Carrie about getting extensions, so we'll try and push it out a little bit. The feasibility of having all three shut down at the same time is just, you know, not gonna be good for anyone here. It's, so we're looking to try and get, get them moved out, Carrie seems to think we can.
Okay.
Uh, we are closest on East State Street, we're doing the final documents now, that we are, we're in the final review stage, so East State Street will go ahead first. We thought we had some time, if we got the raised grant, we could have had West State Street done later, because it was superseded the DRI, that wasn't the case, so we're gonna try and stagger them as best we can.
So we think East State Street is twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, and then potentially South Union twenty twenty-four?
And West State is the, the wild card.
If we can push it out to twenty twenty-five, maybe?
We're gonna ask, we're, we're gonna, we're asking for extension with the COVID, everything, and supply chains, everything, all that, we're hoping that the, the state will give us an extension.
Okay.
I find it hard to believe that wouldn't be possible, but.
We've had a few, I guess, um, so we're getting near the, up against the final date, but I really don't think there's gonna be an issue with anything going on. I don't think we're unique in this.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think other, other issues, and this would allow us to do them in twenty-three, four, and five, and stagger them, because we cannot have them hit all at once.
Who got the DRI in your fours, wasn't it Denver? Is that, is that all spaghetti, I doubt it.
How do you do that?
I don't know. So I'm not sure, there isn't that. So, uh, speaking of the other DRI project, Oak Hill Park, I do see they're moving along slowly but surely on that, are we expecting, are they gonna work on it through the winter?
They're gonna work as long as they can.
Okay, and then pick it up in the spring, yeah?
The, uh, theater structure is in production, so we're waiting for that.
Okay.
And we did, um, order the benches and the waste receptacles.
Awesome. I got one quick question regarding the, uh, the North Union Street project, uh, the beautification aspect of it. Um, are, are we still waiting on the downtown lighting that's supposed to be going up?
Well, we ran into a little snag with that, uh, so we're, uh, Melon, who we contracted with, he, uh, apparently he ordered the wrong switches, is that, whatever?
Yeah, so ones we have, that he's purchased, don't fit inside the lights.
So he's gotta reorder them, and we're gonna be on a very tight schedule to, uh, not, I'm not gonna be optimistic that they'll be there by Christmas.
Christmas?
By one. By the parade, so.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, but they, the, the plan still is to put them up?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I, I think that's awesome, I'm excited to see that come to fruition, somebody asked me about that, so I wanted to follow up on that. Awesome.
Can I just follow up on that too?
Alderman Anastasia?
I received, uh, some concerns from North Union residents that it's dark on North Union Street, so with these new fixtures brightening the street up, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
And if you noticed out there, if you've been out there, additional lighting has been put at the crosswalks.
I did notice that, some of them don't work though.
Yeah, they're still kind of dumb.
Yeah, so. But they're motion activated, right?
Yeah.
So you have to actually walk to it, into the crosswalk for it to click on.
Yeah, so, they're pretty cool.
What with the new, with this new lighting, when we get it up, yes, there's additional lighting there on the street.
Yes, my constituent that complained to me was saying that the roofings weren't bright enough, and if somebody gets hit there, the city could get sued, I don't know the legalities of it.
Sounds like an electrical expert and a legal expert there.
So, I know, I'll bring it up.
Alderman, Alderman, wait.
Yeah, um, I'm just gonna follow up on what, uh, uh, Alderman Gonzalez said a couple of weeks ago, I've had a couple of people ask me if those white ballards by the, the brick around the fire pits, one gentleman asked me if that was the primer, and if we're actually gonna paint them, because they just think if they were painted, they'd look better, so I was just curious, is that the color we're sticking with?
That was the color in the, in the car.
Okay, well, it's just, it's, it's so, it's so light that it doesn't bring out the darker grays and the, the cement, you know, I mean, the, the brick, it just kinda washes them out, so I'd like to see them painted black or.
Might as well paint them neon yellow.
That too.
Look at you there, I'm colorblind, so it looks great for me.
So you're not much color?
No, not at all.
We, we.
Just love to share that.
I'll, get some Rustoleum, go out there with a piece of cardboard.
I think I hear Alderman Gonzalez volunteering the community service project.
They, they waived the grievance process on the DPW.
What are your suggestions for the colors?
Natural, like, uh, like those benches and those spike, um, uh, racks, you know what I mean? I want it to all look like it was all meant to be there, not just.
Yeah, like it connects.
We'll take it up your advisory.
That's what you said last time.
Just sharing what some of my constituents have told us.
I'm gonna be the angry constituent up here most.
Let the beard grow out?
Oh, yeah, get my cane.
Come shuffling in.
Shuffling.
Okay.
You see my Facebook post then?
All right, anything else for Director Thompson? All right, so, um, yeah, I mean, I think if we can get some of that information cleaned up, we, I, I don't have a problem moving forward with this next Tuesday, if we can get some of the, the data, um, to, to the reference, um, I, I think this is critical, uh, all of these projects, I just, I wanna see them come to fruition, so. Okay, we, I will make a motion to postpone this, uh, PL one oh five dash twenty-two until next week?
So second.
Second, my old man Gonzalez, all in favor, I opposed, motion carried. Uh, I've got amendment referrals for consideration, or made a report, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So second.
Second, my old man Gonzalez, all in favor, I opposed, motion carried.
All right, I'd like to call the board, a public safety committee for Tuesday, November first, uh, let the record show, all of them present, uh, approval of the minutes, previous meeting Tuesday, October eighteenth, uh, make a motion, you're the second? Second, my old man Anastasia, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, uh, unfinished business, we have none, uh, new referrals for consideration, uh, this one, I have two. Uh, let me see, my notes here. Uh, this one, I had a picture that I printed out for you guys, uh, I highlighted the spot on there that's in question. Uh, when you look the picture, uh, if you turn it, uh, the normal way portrait, not landscape, uh, and when you look at it, uh, just imagine, uh, North Union, I'm sorry, uh, State Street being on the bottom of the paper, and Country Fair being at the top of the paper, uh, when you look at it, the orange should be on the left-hand side of, uh, Twelfth Street, North Twelfth. So I had a constituent, uh, contact me about a traffic issue on North Twelfth and Washington Street, uh, and then we have constituents that own the construction company, or the roofing company, this highlighted on that paper, uh, near that corner, they legally park on that corner. Uh, they are legally parked, there are no signs on that eastern side of that street. There are signs, however, on the western side of North Union Street. Uh, so the problem is, is when, uh, people are parked in that orange section, uh, it causes a bottleneck of traffic, and is bringing, uh, safety concerns for the school buses, uh, there's issue early in the morning, midday traffic, and late afternoon traffic. Uh, so as people are deciding to turn down Washington Street, other cars are coming to the stop sign, and, uh, it's been leading to a limited gridlock, uh, we have issues where, uh, people are coming up, you got your, the people that are rushing, you got your bogaters that'll just block the street off, Washington Street, you got the polite drivers that'll just wave people on, and then you got the traffic stoppers, the people will just pull up and just sit. So, with all of that going on, it just becomes a, a, a bad spot. Uh, you, the school buses will try to turn, and they can't make the turn because there's cars that are parked right there in that orange spot. Uh, and just recently, uh, the constituent wrote me and said that there was a side swipe, uh, accident that was there, uh, probably because people are trying to squeeze by. So, what I'm proposing is that we put a no parking from here to corner sign, X amount of feet from that intersection, not to eliminate the parking for those people that park there, but to just push it down, uh, just a little further north, so that there's clearance for the buses and cars and everything to get by, and then once they're further down those X amount of feet, then they can wait for the traffic to get by those parked cars, uh, when it's happening. Uh, and, uh, I emailed, uh, police chief Richardson and DPW director for feedback, and police chief said that, uh, uh, that is an issue on that street, uh, and I'd be more than willing to hear from DPW director, uh, Thompson, to hear what he can help us with, to, uh, help us to make a decision on this.
I'm in full agreement with you, there's definitely an issue there, it is a concern, I've driven it many times, and there's a bottleneck, so um, I support whatever the council wants to do on this, uh, the chief's right, Alderman Robinson's correct, there are, um, possible implications with, you know, residents there complaining about not being able to park over the buildings, but we have a safety issue there. So, I think it's a good idea.
Alderman McColl?
You know, I drive down the street, this actually is a really busy street, and, you know, I, I think it's unfortunate that there's parking on either sides of this, and you know, I actually, my recommendation would be for that one block not to have parking on, on either side, because when I drive down there, and there, there's no space to, to go anywhere, um, not just at that side, but that one whole, um, block there. And I could be wrong, but I do believe that almost all of those houses on that street actually have driveways. So, that would be my suggestion, is to really look at that whole block as to whether or not there should be parking, because it's, I think it's a pretty narrow street.
Alderman, wait.
Yeah, I agree with, with Sammy, a few years ago, uh, we built it together, I was there, we painted a house along that section, and there are side, there are driveways, but people were parking anywhere, and the one arrow you have at the top, that's where the company is located, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just think if you don't go further, and I think, uh, Alderman McColl hit on it, but at the point, that whole side should be no parking, it is, I mean, I've gone, we've all driven down Twelfth Street, and it's tight, and you're either waiting for someone to come through, and all it takes is one parked car, and you're messed up. But if the company's there, and they're gonna be coming in and out, I think just having the no parking from the corner of Washington back to where you have it marked, it'll help, but I don't think it's gonna solve the, the problem, because I think you're gonna have more cars parked, even if it's one, and it's still gonna mess up.
Yeah.
Alderman, the problem? Uh, we'll see. All right, so, um, the east side
Mm-hmm.
is my ward.
Yes.
And I've brought this forward before to do no parking on both sides, and the constituents are dead set against it. Um, so, the southern part there of North Twelfth Street, there's no parking on the east side, and then it flips, and then it goes no parking on the western side of that section of North Twelfth Street. So it is kinda goofy.
Yeah.
Okay, so that southern part there, where there's a car approaching the stop sign of Washington, uh, that right-hand side is no parking, and then you go to that side of North Twelfth Street, and there's no parking on the, on the left-hand side. Um, we talked about before moving it all to just one side, but I think the easiest solution is just put in the parking sign, um, X amount of feet back, and, and try to at least eliminate, uh, that bottleneck right there at the intersection, and reevaluate down the road. Um, because I had even, uh, I know in, of course, when the previous DPW director, we had talked about, you know, do we move all the parking, no parking on one side, like a typical street, would, um, his concern was that that could create a raceway, something or other, traffic calming, you know, um, kind of what, what Bob would say about that type of stuff. Um, which, fair enough, right, I mean, you gotta slow down if there's all of a sudden cars parked in front of you, so, um, so that's, that's my two cents for what it's worth, Vernon, I, I, I would like to at least see no parking, I don't know, forget how many feet back from the intersection you're supposed to go.
I don't know.
Twelve feet, fifteen feet?
DPW.
Right, whatever, whatever, whatever that is, I, I think that'll solve, uh, the problem.
And the mayor has something on that.
Yeah, if you start talking about parking on streets, and you start talking about, yes, everybody has a driveway, well, you gotta think about two, one if they have visitors coming to see them, and then, you know, driveways may be only one car, possibly two, and you take away that from them, and that's when people get angry. So I remember we did go through that, we had people who were up in arms about it, so, uh, you know, there's, there's many streets in the city that we, and I've said this before, that, uh, you know, look at them in your, in your, uh, your different wards, and look at the streets that maybe we can reduce parking on one side or the other, uh, Craig Street up in the, in the second ward. If you've got cars, people, for some reason, they just are not considering, and they park on both sides of the road, across from each other, dead narrows are down, you'll never get a fire truck to.
Yeah, the people at the bottom of York Street do the same thing, they're, they're always parked on both sides.
Yeah, so, so these are things that, you know, where we should take a look at, at all of them, and maybe do a, a comprehensive study throughout the city on our parking, what sign, you know, we need, we need new signs around, different ones of war out there, and that's something that, uh, you know, maybe we can get an intern in here to take a, a look at that, and take a look at all that, but when you start talking about parking, people get very sensitive of that, because you take away their, the opportunity for, for visitors to come to their homes and park, um, that's, they're not gonna accept that very well.
Alderman McColl? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm wait.
That's okay, we're no change.
No, I just.
No, not here, um, no, I just wanted to ask a question, when, um, a business that's located in a residential area, as part of zoning and the planning board, do they put stipulate, stipula, I think they put stipulations on them? So I would like to know when this business, and there has been other businesses located, but this isn't the first time. It, it's right in the middle of residential area, um, in that area in town, coming from Country Fair, kind of the busiest streets, it's not a wide street. So I, I just, I would like to know what their opinion was, um, if they even had one on the parking situation, because I think we put, we do these things, and then, you know, we get the complaints, so I think anytime you put a business in a residential area, you're gonna get complaints.
Yeah.
But I do think even going back as far as you have, as far as you have it marked, it will help, but I don't think it's gonna solve the whole thing, because the people that work at that construction, trucks coming and going, there's still gonna be issues with, with traffic and parking.
I frequently go to a street a lot, and what I've noticed is that early in the morning, they're there, and then they're gone until late in the afternoon. Uh, usually no one's there during midday, it's once in a blue moon when they are there, um, but just move, I think, in, in, in I've, in my first house, we had a single lane driveway, so I know what it's like to do the jockeying of, of vehicle out of a single lane, so the last thing I wanna do, especially on that street, because it's a busier street, it's harder to back out, or, or pull out, or whatever, uh, of that street to try to jockey vehicles, so, I think, uh, as, as suggested, as a temporary, uh, something to do in the immediate, to, to push the, the parked vehicles further down, just a little bit, uh, should help alleviate, uh, the issue that we're having at, at that intersection. And then, uh, as far as that construction company, I think they're the second company that's there, I think, I don't, can't remember the dates on that Google picture, but I, I don't even think it's that company that's written on it now, I think it's someone else. And they usually park two or three vehicles on that side, so you're talking, they do have a double-wide driveway there where they can park in, so, you know, but we can't control that, I guess, so use their driveway if they can't park in the street now, you know, so, but, uh, that's something I figured, plus that's John's ward there, and, you know, with them saying, you know, Alderman Robinson interfering with our driveway, you know?
No, 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 you're gonna, you'll go and do it, and then I'll be, I'll be the one getting, getting the calls.
Oh, good, okay.
You'll be sending, you'll be sending the calls to me.
Well, let's do it.
Uh, you're, you're Alderman, is that?
Let's do it, no, we just, if, you know, just, hey, I've seen a lot of kids come down there and get ready to turn, or walk across the street, and it's like, wow, these people aren't stopping for the kids either, they're just, they're just, you know, the rushers and everything, Alderman.
Yes?
McColl?
Me?
Yes.
Okay, in looking at this, you said that twelve feet from, um, a stop sign, is that correct? Because that won't even be, that's a fraction of what you have here.
I was just highlighting, I was just, that's.
Because that's, yeah.
That's all in semantics of DPW, we're, we're, we're making a decision to install that, we're not in the, in the weeds in terms.
That's all in semantics that DPW, we're, we're, we're making a decision to install that. We're not into, in the weeds in terms of how many feet it's gonna be. That's, that's all.
Right, but if, if we're looking to, to do something that is going to alleviate at least a little of that congestion, we have to know like what, what, how much that is. Because there are some streets that have no parking between these signs and that might make more sense. Right? From this space to this space and then they would have the whole rest of the street to park. And that would alleviate a little bit more of that congestion on that area. Do you know, do you know what I mean with those signs?
Well, that lot, that lot looks like it's probably about seventy-five, eighty feet deep. So if we, the distance on that orange marker there, it looks like it goes right to the edge of the driveway. I mean, if it goes right to there, that's plenty of room. That's, two buses can fit right there. Before they would have to wait for a parked car to go around again. So that's two vehicles that are out of the intersection. Versus a bus coming halfway and turning and then can't go anywhere because someone's blocking it, so. But again, you know, that's, that's something for DPW, uh, to make that determination, but that's just my suggestion. I, I would say to go to that first driveway. And there's still, like I said, I zoomed in quite a bit on that picture there. You, there's still quite a bit to go before you get to selling them.
So Vernon, are any of these, Vernon, any of these houses rentals that don't have a driveway? Cause I think one of them that's been there for years, cause I know, um, one of the nurses I used to work with at St. Francis lived there. That if you look at the map, there's a house on the corner and then right behind it, and I don't think they have a driveway.
Are you talking about that big rental one?
There's.
In back, there's a huge driveway.
Yeah.
So it's, you go off.
You go and you go in the back and there's a big driveway. You mean that great big white one?
I think that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, there's a big, yeah, there's a big parking area in there.
And the one on the corner, they park on Washington Street.
Yeah, because, um, just as an example, the street that I think is Ward Seven over by the, across from the middle school that we put signs up not to park. People park there every day and those are rentals and that's why it hasn't changed. They're still parking there. So just, you know, so we understand it.
And that's Chapel School, it's, you're talking about Forest Street. Anything like that, is there a public area or something like that? I can't remember. I've done about two or three of these and I think.
No parking sign?
Yeah, no, no?
So, so just as.
You put it in and you're gonna hear.
Then you have a.
Yeah.
I'm just.
John?
Again, just as the Alderman of this ward, I would, uh, like to just take small steps. And start with just whatever the typical no parking sign is from an intersection.
Yep.
Um, I'll be honest, I've never, I've gotten calls about cars going too fast down from North 12th Street. They want like, I don't know, speed bumps or something, but I've, I've never really had a call about this. So, we can always extend the no parking sign, but we can go back the other way. So I guess I would prefer to say, let's start with whatever, twelve feet, fifteen feet, whatever the typical no parking here at a corner. And then, uh, reassess it because David put in a no parking here at a corner sign and opened up a whole can of worms over there, so, uh.
His constituents told him to.
Little, uh, I, I would prefer to do small steps, personally.
Agreed. I don't think, uh, I don't think there's any doubt from the council, the rest of the council, that that's probably the course we should take. Yep, probably don't need to even continue discussing this. We could go on for another half hour, just beat it all over the place here, or we could just keep going. Oh, let's keep going, keep going.
On a different subject, but how, how many more meetings, Paul? Um, speaking of, um, North Seventh, I did hitch a hip one of your constituents, that North Seventh and Reed, I think it is. Where they park all the way up to the, um, sign and then they also park in the subway. You can tell where, there's actually no subway. Cause it's all dirt now, cause they park there. So I'm just passing that along. Do you know where I mean?
We would go about it.
Yeah, let's just connect on that one.
Alright, so, where they have the parties?
Hmm?
Where they have the parties?
Yes, and the front yard barbecues.
Yeah, barbecues, parties, bands.
But, but that's a big issue.
He was there.
Which you're talking about.
It's intense, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so.
Paul's got a hot take here.
I don't, I just.
No, I got a hot take too. But, uh, so we can, uh, move this to PL or?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, so we need to make a motion.
Sure, make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move this to PL.
I'll say, I'll say that for you. I like the.
It's like Paul.
Alright, um, and seconded by Alderman Anastasia. Alright, moving on, uh, so this one should be pretty quick, sorry. Oh, oh, yeah, oh, Peter?
Hi.
Polls?
I'm having a voice call down there. I don't even know how to discuss it. What the hell are we doing here?
Making motions, putting a sign.
There's not how that works. That's not how this works.
You can make voice motions, can't you Tiffany?
Protect, they're supposed to follow Robert's.
That's.
They are not.
Yes, okay.
They're not.
So we didn't need to. You're making me drilling something we don't need to.
I'm gonna stick with the details.
Thank you, Alderman Gonzalez, for keeping us on pace.
We're moving on to the next, uh, topic, discussion topic and that would be, uh, this one is gonna be a discussion. Allegheny River Trail, uh, dedication to, uh, some type of plowing. Uh, the concerns were brought up, uh, this is brought up last year. Uh, we promote the trail, uh, being able to connect it to the city and its walkable areas. And it was funny because I found an article that talked about that, uh, the fact that the path is about ten feet wide asphalt. And we wanna make it, uh, accessible to all, including handicap accessibility. Uh, so with that in mind, uh, the trail we're discussing is on both sides of State Street. Along Constitution, behind JCC, heading south and along Henley, uh, heading towards Garbo Park. Uh, I know in the past we've talked about liability. I remember something about liability being mentioned if we do. But I say there's liability if we don't. Uh, I think there's laws to protect against frivolous lawsuits. I think we can eliminate the liability aspect. Uh, and then the benefits, you know, being able to get out of the house, you know, in the wintertime. We see a lot of people out there walking, uh, you know, snowshoeing or walking or hiking, uh. And, uh, all those things that we're bringing here as far as the bikes and scooters and whatnot. Uh, and then we wanna try and make it inclusive, uh, for everyone else, so, uh. Uh, what we wanna try to find out was, uh, is there a dedication to, uh, keeping the trails clean this winter? And if so, is there something on the council's part where we have to worry about funding, uh, as far as man hours, uh, costs, the equipment that will be used? And I guess, uh, Alderman's office.
Uh, I, I, I completely think that this is a good idea. Um, I mean, I'm the first person to admit that, uh, I'm not a lawyer. So, um, I can't really speak, you know, eloquently to liability, but common sense would dictate that even in the summer. You know, right now, I, I just took my bike out on the road, on the, on the trail and it was covered in leaves, right? And I'm riding my bike, um, and, and it's just as, you know, slippery or dangerous. If you have to be careful. I think there's some assumed, like all our playground equipment, there's assumed risk. Use at your own risk type things, even if we had to post some sign for the ambulance chasers that are out there. Um, you know what I mean? But, you know, there's assumed risk. I think it would just be a good public service to do our best to try to keep it clean so that we can use it. There, we don't close it in the dirt, right? It's not like we chain it off. So people are gonna use it either way. If they really wanted to use it, why not make it a little cleaner for them? There's something we can do. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the logistics are doing that either and I think we could probably partner with Allegheny people. Assuming we're on speaking terms with them.
I think in the past, we've always stopped right at the Allegheny part there that, that picks up on their end, but, you know, uh, Mayor?
I could shed, I hope I could shed some light on this. On, uh, we had advisory, Allegheny River Trail Advisory meeting back here in September twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. And, uh, at that time, it was brought up by Wendy Brannan, cause this topic brought up about plowing the, uh, the trail. She brought it up that when the, the trail was originally formed, it was a, it was, the idea was it was gonna be a four season trail. And, uh, you mentioned snowshoeing. If we plow it, then that takes out snowshoeing.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if we plow it, that takes out people using, uh, cross-country skis on it. So now the other thing that came up too is that the other communities are not gonna plow it. Uh, Allegheny has, uh, Town of Allegheny said, we're not plowing it. Uh, the Town of Ollyens, that they are not plowing it. Uh, St. Bonaventures, uh, said they will only plow the sections where the students use it. Uh, and, uh, you know, and, and, and in all honesty, I've had only one complaint about the trail not being plowed. So, um, so, you know, it, it's resources, uh, it's wear and tear. Uh, you know, if we plow, we've got to sand or we've got to salt. So it's, and that was brought up at the meeting, that, uh, you know, putting these, these heavy trucks, even our five-fifties on there. Uh, plow it and then the sand it, you know, it, it is, the other, cause the other villagers in that, or the towns, they use, uh, salt, sand mixture. We use salt. So, um, I don't think we have, as it stands right now, you know, uh, it would be, uh, we get a major storm. We've got a lot of streets and we have our own sidewalks that we have to take care of. Now, when we do the trails, uh, you know, the, uh, uh, the different trails we're doing, uh, you know, we put these, we're gonna, we're just gonna scrap the, the residents to keep them clear. Cause that's either sidewalks, basically. So, uh, you know, so at this meeting, uh, Director Thomas was, Thompson was there and, uh, we went along with the other communities. I don't know when this got started, that, uh, I know, uh, uh, under the former director, uh, they did do some plowing on it. And that was done without my knowledge. Uh, so, um, had I known, uh, cause I think Linda can attest to this, I think we went back with you, Mayor, that, that the trail wasn't plowed. It's a four season trail. If we take away that aspect, then, uh, you know, we're, we're denying people that wanna snowshoe, to want to, uh, uh, cross-country ski, sled. And that, you know, through there, so that's my, uh.
I will say, I didn't think of the snowshoe respect. That's a good point, so.
Yeah, I see. I'm sorry, uh, Alderman Witt?
Yep, um, I can attest to Mayor Alios right. We did not plow. And I think, uh, and I had people that tell me they snowshoe all the time over there, so I would go down. To me, it doesn't make sense for us to plow and then stop where the town is or Allegheny because, so we just, you know what I mean? If we did the whole trail, that would make sense.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, um, and the other thing is, um, I have so many people that call me when the secondary streets don't get plowed. When my avenues, which are very narrow, get lap, get left. And they have, you know, six inches of snow that's been packed down because they're last to get plowed. So if I tell them, we're gonna do the trail instead of your street, they're gonna hang me. But yeah, we did not plow and I just think we don't have the manpower.
I, no, I'm sorry.
So it was my resident who made that, I think the, the one, um, complaint about it, who also was the one responsible for doing the plowing in the past. Um, and so I understand that, although I do have to say I have lots of friends who cross-country ski and snowshoe and a lot of them do it on the dykes. Um, I'm not sure that means we should, we should plow the, uh, it would be nice if, uh, if we could plow the, the trail. Um, I think that would make it more user friendly. I, I don't think the traffic in terms of the cross-country skiers and snowshoeers are so great on the trail. That, you know, I think that's a minor, minute amount of people versus who would use it without, if we had the resources to be able to, to plow.
I, I agree with that assessment there, um, and I, you know, when, when it comes to the, the trail being done versus the, the smaller roads. I, I, I get that, but that's a matter of, uh, project management. Um, you know, it's, I don't think the trail should get done prior to any of the roads. But if you live on a small road, you're always gonna be the last one to get plowed because of the fact it's a small road. Uh, in the same essence, the national grid only brings power back to the higher populated areas first. If you're just one or two people on the street, unfortunately, you're gonna be dead last. Um, and then when it comes to, uh, the bigger trucks, I don't think a big truck is needed. It's a ten foot wide path. So you're talking about something that's the size of a driveway. Um, I used to do that with my four wheeler. I mean, it's, a four wheeler could.
They use for the sidewalks, like that's, whatever that, like, I don't know, gator, I don't know what they're called, like a little ATV with a plow on the front.
Perfectly fine to, to push snow and, and, and move it out of the way. Um, but I definitely understand the fact that, hey, it's a four season trail. Uh, I can work with that. That gives me something to give to constituents. But you did mention you only receive one and I've received numerous, so when those people come, after they hear about this, I'm gonna inform to you, Mayor. That way, that way you can, uh, schmooze them.
Also, I think it's important to add that this maybe doesn't necessarily need to be done like daily or.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, maybe if we just did it like once a month.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Just so that it didn't turn into like, you know, icebergs and ice drifts.
Two inches of ice.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know, a day when it's not so bad and the streets, it doesn't even necessarily be out, they take the little, whatever the thing is out there. I don't know, whatever.
Alright, well, oh, John?
So, I've got an opinion that is a little con- contrary to this, uh, and that is. Uh, as, as down the road, as we continue focusing, you know, the mayor brought it up. We're expecting these shared use paths that are gonna be going in all over the place, uh, to be maintained by residents. I have a very, very concerned constituent that owns property on East State Street, who is not gonna get a shared use path. Uh, on his property that he's, uh, very upset that he's gonna have to maintain ten feet and, and shovel ten feet wide. Uh, so I don't know what the solution is long term, but we're reading, we're getting more of these, right? Because that's ultimately what our community wants and what will benefit our community. But with that comes the responsibility of how we, how we maintain them, uh, and, and is a priority in the wintertime. Uh, as we have children who walk to school, so we're gonna have a shared use path down Wayne Street. We're gonna have one down East State Street, down South Union Street, so on and so forth, so. You know, I'm not one to just look for adding the additional positions and a gator or whatever the vehicle is with a plow in the winter. I don't know if it's the, you know, I don't know what the, the, the attendant who attends the flower gardens, what he does in the wintertime. But to have, to have a, you know, person who's responsible to, to go up and down North Union Street and hit all the shared use paths. And if there's time, hit a trail or two. And that's, I mean, I don't know what that job is or what that individual does when there's no gardens to, to tend. Um, is that an opportunity for us to address this growing long-term need of these ten foot wide paths? That, you know what, if we put them in, maybe we should look at some accommodations there. I am looking for an answer right now, Mayor, but maybe brainstorm something that we could collaborate on and try to come up with. Um, because our needs are gonna get greater and we're gonna get more of these calls and, and concerns.
And we're getting more paths.
Cause we're getting more paths, right? Um, and that's, and, and the answer, I can't tell constituents is, well, just snow ships, you know, you can snow, snowshoe down the path, right? They're gonna be expected to shovel, so, um. So is there, is there a way that we can address that? Alderman Anastasia just said he's retired and has a CDL. He might be interested in a, a job like that. Get up at four AM. He's probably already awake. He probably can't sleep at night anyway, so we could go out with a pot.
Boy, after dealing with snow and ice for several years, I mean, you can't just do it once a month because you're gonna get ice and hard path. An ATV vehicle is not gonna be able to take care of that. So it, it's something that if you start doing it, you're gonna have to do it daily.
Okay.
Alderman?
I, um, I was in a situation, I ward, where the school system insisted on putting sidewalks. You know, back then, a lot of the kids too walked to school, which didn't happen. So they put the sidewalks in and then they sold the school and the residents had to take care of these sidewalks. And I can tell you ninety percent of those did not get taken care of because they feel they didn't put them there. And people don't walk there because our kids, most of them don't walk to school. They ride a bus or their parents drop them off. Um, so yeah, you're gonna have people that are saying, you know, you're putting these, these, not just trails, but the trail we're talking about. Um, and I'm just thinking, so we're gonna plow it to a certain point and stop, so they're only gonna be able to go certain and then come back. And again, it goes back to manpower. That's why we didn't do it. We didn't have the manpower. Uh, and I think the other thing to keep in mind, and, um, it's part of, of, you know, trying to have manpower. Uh, our winters are getting more mild. Uh, you're not gonna see scooters out on the trail in the winter, at least I hope not. Uh, before the, the bikes you want, cause they have thicker, uh, tires. But, uh, I, I just wanted to share my experience with the, the sidewalks that were put in that people didn't want. And now the schools closed.
Alright.
I just want to remind you, since on, the trail's held up pretty well. I I don't know how old it is, but it's been here quite a while, the surface is pretty good shade. Um if we were to start plowing and or salting it, I think we would we may cause damage to that rapidly. And you, you know, if your Director Thompson would understand that potholes in roads are usually caused by freeze thaw, and a lot of that's to do with the salt in the water and melt and freeze. If we start treating this trail different, we may be replacing it.
Not to mention what the salt could do to the envi, you know, like the vegetation around the trail. I don't know. Wouldn't that be bad for it? Isn't that bad?
I mean, maybe, but.
Like that probably can't be good.
We'd just have to be ready to replace that trail. I mean, we have had to replace it all yet, right? So um and I think we've got over a decade, but if it starts lasting as long as our streets, that's a considerable.
It is twenty-six years old.
Okay, so I I would think if we start adding salt to it and plowing it with anything, you're probably looking at replacing the salt more often.
All right, any more comments for this committee?
I do have something for you.
All right.
Um so I just wanted to mention it, and it's just a topic, not to the for discussion, uh but I did send out an email to all of the aldermen, uh as well as the mayor regarding public safety for a future conversation. Some issues and concerns had come up. The the mayor had passed it along to me via zoning and uh co-enforcement regarding the um the potential or interest of regulation cannabis dispensaries um from a zoning enforcement standpoint uh in the city of Olian. Uh and so I did pass along that item to any of the aldermen, uh if anybody is interested in um researching this and and working on something, uh that they can talk to me or the mayor on that.
Just so everybody knows too, uh there's a uh on December fifteenth, Nikon is is holding a webinar on the updates on cannabis law, so uh that's from ten AM until eleven AM. There's a thirty-dollar fee, so if any of you are interested, let Tiffany know, and we'll get you registered for it. So uh it's an update. Now, with that, you know, with with cannabis, we are, we're, we did not opt out, so we're we're in. It'll just be where do we want the dispensary back, what are the zoning, uh how, you know, do we want the distance apart, how far apart do we want like next to each other, uh and all that, so we have to make some, we have to make some decisions on that.
So we need to do that till after the Nikon training?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think what John's asking, anybody that wants to, I guess.
If you're interested in working on this, um I I I'm slammed, so I unfortunately, I I'm looking for some help. Uh I know the mayor's, um who's, is it Code? Unfortunately, Ryan Reid is working on this.
We've got Codes, uh Code's, like Police Department, we didn't have the Fire Department because of the, you know, medical needs and that.
Sure.
And uh DPW and so who who put packages together. Ryan's already, you know, talking about it, and uh the uh planning board has been questioning Kerry on this, on uh what are we doing, uh so they have some guidance too.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, uh Lynn's is back there. Do you have anything?
I'm good.
All right. Wanted to give you your fifteen minutes of planning here.
All right. Yeah, while we're. How can we do it?
Uh um we can just have a discussion, I guess.
Yeah, just.
So another discussion item.
Okay, another discussion item.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Uh we have an opportunity, we've been talking about vehicles, and uh an opportunity has come up that we can uh we can uh purchase, I think, what has been a couple of different ones, and John gave us a couple of ideas on where to go, but a van for our H-Track person. Uh right now, he's been using his own vehicle, uh taking tools in and out, and uh and uh we're paying him mileage, and uh the the good way, I think the best way to do it is to uh get a van for that person, uh the equipment can be kept in the van, it'll have City of Olian on it, it'll only be able to use for City of Olian business, and uh uh and we could, we priced out a couple of ones. One was thirty-nine, close to forty thousand. Another one, I think, that came forward was one, I think, thirty-five, John, is what?
Yeah, it was like.
Right, that area, so and with this, remember, we're gonna be able to charge this a third, a third, a third to each budget. So it'll be a third to general, a third to water, a third to sewer. So we'll get a, we're looking to, the opportunity is there to get a van, uh this is on the list, uh that was prepared for everybody, so we're looking to uh just for your permission so we can get this van and uh and charge it at the, even if we get it to fifty-fourty thousand, it's about thirteen thirteen-three something for each account, so we have money on each contingency account that we can pay for this.
I I just have one question. Is this the size of the the van that the electricians use, or?
So it's a four or some vans.
So is it the same, I I don't know, three quarters?
Yeah, a little bit.
So it's bigger?
Yeah, yeah. It's not terribly different, though.
Okay, I was curious, I'm trying to.
It's like the old side, old kind of conversion van, just like the big.
Yeah.
The higher roof, put the equipment in it. Um you know, what might be helpful, Mayor, so I mean, this is just a discussion item and an update, is uh maybe we could uh send out a a lane or something for the aldermen to look at, um they can, you know, just check it out, um so that the mayor and Director Thompson sent something to me, um as for reference, and I have a history of buying vehicles, so I started doing some research and and found a couple that had like fewer miles and stuff like that, and I mean, just because the the weight period, I mean, so what, here's a question on that topic. What's the procurement situation like with regards to that with a used vehicle, like? I know with new vehicles, you get into the queue and all that type of stuff, but like with used vehicles, is there a specific procurement process you've gotta go through?
We'll have to look and see if used vehicles are on street there, we could do that.
Okay.
That'll be a, that'll be a question.
Yes, yeah, because there is no new, Linda.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 it's like twenty-twenty, it's like twenty-twenty, thirty-five thousand.
Snap, twenty-ten.
No, it's, it was like twenty-twenty, twenty nineteen or something.
We may have to get three quotes.
Right.
You know, which we could do.
Right, okay, so just something to think about.
Yep.
All right, any other questions, gentlemen? All right, moving on, uh approval of the committee minutes. Uh we have none. Uh with that, I made a motion to adjourn. Second, second, all in favor? Opposed, adjourned.